The Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, and I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir. In the closed session, the board gave the county attorney guidance with regard to the matter of O'Hareby Dare County, approved the minutes of the last closed session and took no other action. Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda. This is a proclamation for diaper need awareness week 2023, and Carla Heppert's here for that presentation.
Welcome, Carla. Good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me here to talk about CYP's diaper bank and diaper need awareness week. As Mr. Outman mentioned, my name is Carla Heppert. I'm the education and program evaluation manager for Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. I also coordinate CYP's diaper bank for our organization. So at the end of this month, the week of September 18th through the 24th, will be nationally recognized as diaper need awareness week. As the title states, this week is a time to bring awareness to diaper need and the struggles of families who experience diaper need in our community. When COVID hit in 2020, CYP launched CYP's diaper bank in response to a need that we saw. We knew that families were struggling to provide basic necessities like diapers for their children. And with the generosity of our local community organizations and businesses and individuals, we've been able to distribute 7,600 packs of diapers throughout Dare County since starting in 2020. That's an estimated 241,000 diapers that we have distributed here in Dare County since beginning. And as we like to call them, they're changes for the better for our community. But while COVID was the catalyst for CYP's diaper bank, the need for diapers has continued to grow with the, with an average of 104 families monthly visiting CYP's diaper bank. So we hold monthly contactless diaper pickup events at our office in Manio on the second Tuesday and Wednesday of every month. We also hold occasional diaper drive-through events in Buxton and in Kitty Hawk to try to spread it throughout the community. These events are completely free for families to participate in, and there are no questions asked. All they have to give us is the size of the diapers that they need. The National Diaper Bank Network recently conducted a study to determine what diaper need looks like in 2023. Their findings were very similar to what we've seen locally as well, that there's an increased need for diapers among families. Forty-seven percent of families in that study reported diaper need, which is one in two families, compared to 33% of families in a similar study that they conducted in 2010. Additionally, 28% of the families who reported diaper needs said that they had skipped meals to be able to provide diapers for their children. Diaper need is defined as the lack of an adequate supply of diapers to keep a baby or child clean, dry, and healthy. And with diapers costing between $70 or $80 or more monthly, and that's just one child, and no safety net programs like WIC or SNAP benefits supporting the purchase of diapers, it's easy for families to struggle to provide them. That's why CYP's diaper bank continues to provide diapers monthly for families in our community. So as I mentioned before, diaper need awareness week is fast approaching, and we hope to use this time to spread awareness about CYP's diaper bank in our community and our continued commitment to serving families, as well as our continued need for community support. We appreciate your time this morning and your willingness to proclaim September 18th through the 24th as diaper need awareness week in Dare County, and I welcome any questions you may have.
So where do you get your funding from to put for the diaper bank?
It is entirely community supported. So we accept donations. When we first started CYP's diaper bank, we received a COVID relief grant from the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and we have been applying for grants and receiving donations from the community, but it is community supported.
Right. Mr. Chairman, whenever we get to read the resolution. Yeah, I was gonna ask Carla if she has a, she has a proclamation you'd like for us to consider, correct?
Yes, I do.
County manager?
Yes, sir. This is a proclamation for diaper need awareness week, September 18th through 24th of 2023. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas the latest study from the National Diaper Bank Network reports that one in two families struggles with diaper need, an increase from previous studies done in 2010 and 2017. And whereas purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending work or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects as well, and their well-being. And whereas the Dare County community recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for our families and community, and improved help for our children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Dare County is proud to be the home of trusted, community-based organizations, including the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18th through 24th, 2023, as diaper need awareness week in Dare County. We thank the Children and Youth Partnership, their staff, and donors for their service through CYP's diaper bank, and encourage the citizens of our community to support CYP's diaper bank to help ensure that all Dare County children and families have what they need to thrive. This is the sixth day of September 2023.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I'll yield to the vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Dare County Board of Commissioners make a $10,000 contribution to the diaper bank, taken from contingency.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. The floor is open for further discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention one thing as we're doing this. With my time in American Red Cross for disaster relief and stuff like that, there are two items that are highly on the list that, to help out our fellow neighbors, that they don't receive, and diapers is number two. And so I do applaud your efforts in this, and also for our fellow citizens, when you are deciding to donate to someone who has suffered from a hurricane disaster, like in Florida, and you want to send donations, diapers is the number two item that's needed. So.
Anyone else?
Being a little bit inclined towards math there, Vice Chairman Overman, this will account for just over 40,000 diapers for our community. So let's do it, folks.
Yes, sir. Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Carla, I hope this helps you guys out.
Thank you all so much. Have a great day.
Resolve.
County manager?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Constitution Week 2023, and Colleen Fagerston's here for that.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm representing the Virginia Dare chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, our local Dare County and the regions around chapter. A Constitution Week was made official through proposals that the Daughters of the American Revolution presented to President Eisenhower, August of 1956, and it has been a national week ever since. September the 20, 17th through the 22nd is Constitution Week, and that is because on the 17th of September is the day the Constitution was signed, back in the day. So I'd like to thank you all for supporting Constitution Week here in Dare County.
I believe there's a proclamation, and I'll ask the county manager to read it.
Sir, this is a Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens of Dare County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities, which that privilege involves, and witness whereof. I've set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the county of Dare to be affixed as the sixth day of September 2023.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the proclamation as presented. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is the Department of Health and Human Services Health and the Breaking Through Task Force. It's a proclamation claiming September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and Kelly Fleming and Michelle Wagner are here for that presentation.
Welcome, ladies.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Kelly Nettenen, and today I have with me Michelle Wagner. We are here on behalf of Health and Human Services and the Breaking Through Task Force to spread public awareness in Dare County regarding suicide. Suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death in Dare County. And in my 16 years with Health and Human Services, every single community health assessment has identified mental health and/or substance use as one of the top community health concerns impacting our residents. September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and each year, the Breaking Through Task Force works to educate and empower members of our community to prioritize mental health concerns in an effort to prevent suicides. This year, the task force created a social media toolkit that members and organizations within our community can use on their social media pages. In addition, we enhanced our website to have a section dedicated to suicide. You can find that page and a button to download the toolkit at breakthestigmaobx.com/suicide. Last year, through a partnership between Breaking Through Task Force, Saving Lives Task Force, Be Resilient OBX, and Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, we created a documentary on the impacts of suicide in Dare County. That documentary, called Shattering the Silence, shares the stories of six Dare County residents, and we'd like to show you a brief trailer with highlights from that documentary. Dare County, the place we love and call home, has many wonderful attributes as a community. However, just like many other communities in the United States, we have a substance use and mental health problem. These problems, while they may be common, can contribute to a variety of premature deaths, including death by suicide.
My dad was a wonderful, hilarious, kind man. He made everybody laugh. The emotions and the feelings that you go through, especially with suicide, it's a lot. It's angry, or sad, or both at the same time.
This mental illness and suicidality does not have a pick-or-choose methodology. It can touch anybody, anywhere, anytime. Mental health is something that can be difficult to recognize because we don't always take care of ourselves, but it truly is an illness like any other chronic illness.
There's always someone out here that will listen. There's always someone out here that will grab your hand and say, "I got you." That you don't have to be in the dark.
The hope would be that there is light at the end of the tunnel, and there are resources available, and there are people like me, lots of people like me, running around that, that are peer support people that know what you're going through because we've been there. And all it takes is to pick up the phone or start looking for those resources.
It seemed very, very paranoid and scared. So I think he was terrified. He apologized several times to everyone, to God, to us, the grandbabies, and that he just felt extremely lost and didn't want to burden us with it.
Perfect.
Yay.
That's perfect. So good. Look.
And I just miss him so much. I think about him all the time.
There are simple steps you can take to help someone who is in emotional pain that may save a life. Ask, "Are you thinking about killing yourself?" It's not an easy question, but studies show that asking an at-risk individual if they are suicidal does not increase suicides of suicidal thoughts.
Don't let yourself get low enough to get to the point of suicidality. There's always hope. As long as you're breathing, there is hope.
So we hope that in honor of this special month, that you will take the time to visit our website and watch the entire 30-minute documentary if you haven't already done so. And the video is available on the site I previously mentioned, breakthestigmaobx.com/suicide. Another exciting opportunity that is new this year is the Suicide Awareness Walk Out of the Shadows. This walk is a collaborative effort of the Saving Lives Task Force, Breaking Through Task Force, and several of the community members you saw in this trailer. This walk will take place on Saturday, October the 14th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at First Light High School Track and Field. The event is free of cost. There will be music, educational materials, and other activities, and we'd like to invite you and the community to join us for this special day. Last year, the United States transitioned from a 10-digit suicide crisis lifeline to the easy-to-remember three-digit number of 988 for 24/7 crisis care. The 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is a network of more than 200 state and local call centers supported by the United States Health and Human Services. We are here before you today to ask for your support. We have three simple requests. One, please take the time over the next month to watch a suicide documentary. If it touches you, please share it with your friends and family. Two, please help us spread the word about, about resources. Both 988 and breakthestigmaobx.com are important mental health resources available to all Dare County residents. And three, we'd like to request that you approve our request to proclaim September 2023 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and Michelle's going to read that proclamation for you now.
Thank you.
A proclamation proclaiming September 2023 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas suicide is a global public health issue that affects individuals of all ages, genders, and backgrounds. And whereas it is our duty as a compassionate and caring society to raise awareness about suicide prevention, promote mental health, and provide support to those affected by suicide. And whereas Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month serves as a crucial opportunity to break the silence surrounding suicide, de-stigmatize mental health, and foster a supportive environment for open dialogue. And whereas by promoting mental health education, early intervention, and resilience, we can contribute to the prevention of suicide and the overall well-being of our communities. And whereas it is essential to encourage empathy, understanding, and compassion, as well as create a culture where seeking help for mental health concerns is seen as a sign of strength, not weakness. And whereas suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death in Dare County and the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States. And suicide is also the second-leading cause of death among young adults in the United States. And whereas 90% of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of a mental health condition according to interviews with family members, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for far too long have surrounded suicide and also discouraged people from getting help. And whereas public education and community activities can boost mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families who are affected by mental illness. And whereas the Breaking Through Task Force was formed in 2016 and is working to provide a community-involved approach to address mental health in our local community and improve the lives of individuals who are struggling with mental illness, as well as their family members and friends. This involves addressing the associated stigmas, breaking through the barriers that may block someone from seeking assistance. someone from seeking assistance, and providing help through available resources.
Pleasure of the board.
I'm going to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the proclamation as presented. It's been seconded by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, I commend your active ways in this. I've had a close family member who also committed suicide and put a ripple effect through our family, and I just want to commend you for what you're doing and also to raise awareness that this is a definite problem, not only here locally, but nationwide as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. And we've given Skylar some swag bags for you all. It has resources and materials on the Breaking Through Task Force, as well as the 988 Crisis Line. There's a lanyard in there and an awareness ribbon, and we hope you'll join us in wearing that this month in recognition. And if there's anything else in the bag you'd like more of, feel free to contact Michelle or I.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is the Health and Human Services Saving Lives Task Force Recovery Overdose Support Services, and Katie Hassler and Jessie Ruby are here for that.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. I'm going to make sure this... Okay. Good morning, I'm Katie Hassler. I am a public health education specialist with the Department of Health and a North Carolina Peer Support Specialist. And this is Jessie Ruby, my partner in the Recovery and Overdose Support Services Program. He is our overdose response coordinator and also a North Carolina Certified Peer Support Specialist. And we are very grateful that you are letting us have this time with you this morning to present our program. There we go. All right, so our program is part of the Department of Health and Human Services Public Health Division, and we are under the Health Education and Outreach Department. We both report to Roxanna Ballinger, and we also work in partnership with the Saving Lives Task Force. So that is where our program originated. And as I said, we are, our acronym, R-O-S-S, is ROSS, Recovery and Overdose Support Services. And we came to be about because we wanted to respond to the community needs in light of the fentanyl crisis, the many overdoses we're seeing, and as those overdoses are, you know, only growing within the country and as well as in our own community, we put this program together to help those who are struggling with substance use and misuse, and also those who struggle with mental health illnesses, disorders, and those kinds of issues, and also who face challenges due to trauma. And we also extend our support to the family and friends of those individuals who struggle with these challenges. So we not only help those, you know, who have the challenges, but we reach out to the family, loved ones, and offer our support and services to them as well. And we were initially funded by a grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, their Injury and Violence Prevention Branch. It's called the Community Linkages to Care Grant. You'll also hear it referred to as CLC. But we were awarded that grant, and that is really what let us put the program together and get us going on this route. And our services are free and available to all Dare County residents, and that's something that, again, we're very grateful to be here because not everyone knows about this program, and it is free, and we are here to help. And time and time again, I'll hear out in the public, "I didn't even know you guys had something like this. I really wish we would have had this, you know, a few years ago, or I wish I'd known about this last year." And so we really are asking for everyone's help in getting the word out that we're here, we're here to help, we have these services, and just making sure that everybody in our community who needs the help can reach out to us, and they know how to reach out to us. So with that, I'm going to just go a little bit into where we started. So it's been a process. We evolved from starting out as a pilot program back in 2018 with the Kill Devil Hills Police Department, and Roxanna was still overseeing that program. We had a public health educator who ran the program. She received information from the Kill Devil Hills Police Department regarding, you know, citizens who had overdosed or who were struggling with substance abuse issues, and she was able to respond to them on a case-by-case basis. She had a cell phone that people were able to reach out to her, and that's sort of where this started. And, you know, at that point, we realized this is getting some traction, we could really expand this, and that individual, that public health educator, wrote the CLC grant, the Community Linkages to Care Grant, and once we received that funding, we were able to expand into what we are today. So today, let's see, Jessie, I'll let you take over from that. What our program is today?
Our program today, we have two full-time peer support specialists who solely dedicate their running this program, each with a confidential cell phone. Our program has a confidential email address community members can use to request support. Looking at the past five years, it's clear that the ROSS is a dynamic program. We are continuing initiatives that are already in place, building on programs and evolving them to fit the current needs, and launching new resources not historically available. Some of the ways that we have been doing that, we have added Xylene test strips to our harm reduction kits that have fentanyl test strips and Narcan that go along with those to prevent overdoses. We have also started another smart recovery program within the community care clinic, and we have also raised the funding for Narcan recently this year, and that has tripled in funding. Also, as harm reductionists and peer support specialists, we believe recovery is not a one-size-fits-all process. We meet people where they are, not where we expect them or hope them to be. So people in our community, we come alongside them, and we listen to their needs, and we fit the program to help them in that way. So what is a peer support specialist? A peer support specialist are people living in recovery from substance use disorder and/or mental illness who provide support to others that can benefit them through their lived experiences. We can provide coaching, mentoring, consultation, and support. We promote self-advocacy, self-direction, and provide information and education. We are advocates for the peers we support. So there's more information on that at www.pss.unc.edu, and this program is out of the University of North Carolina, where it's home-based at. Our services and compliance with the Community Linkage to Care Grant provided through the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, we provide services within the following three categories. Post-Overdose Response Team, also known as PORT, Syrenes Service Program, also known as SSP, and our Justice Involves Support Recovery Court, the Detention Center, and Reentry are the three areas that the Justice Involves Support.
And we, those are the three areas that, you know, they ask us to focus on, but again, like Jessie said, as it is a dynamic program, we were really able to expand our services to meet the needs of our community, and some of the other things that we're able to do are listed here. So we, Jessie and I both run recovery support groups within the community, and we really try to expand those support groups to meet the needs, depending on if, you know, you're somebody who follows 12-step. Jessie's, you know, he chairs those meetings, and it is very visible out in that recovery community. And I facilitate SMART Recovery, which stands for Self-Management and Recovery Training, which can either go along with 12-step, or you can use it, you know, as an alternative to 12-step if 12-step really isn't your thing. And it just basically focuses on kind of like a cognitive behavioral therapy lens. So we work with, you know, what are people's thoughts? We work on, you know, control of urges and impulses, and really looking at what you want to do in the present and the future, and sort of, you know, what is your brain, the science behind the brain and addiction. We also do individual support and advocacy. So Jessie works with gentlemen who reach out to us and need help. I work with females who reach out to us and need help, and we can sit with them one-on-one, listen to their needs, listen to what they've been going through, and figure out how we can put together a plan that fits them. And like I said earlier, we also support the family and friends of those who struggle. So sometimes family members will reach out to us and say, "My son, daughter, spouse, you know, whatever, is struggling. I don't know how to help them. How do I talk to them?" Or, you know, "What are some services that I can, you know, tap into to help them, to reach out to them?" And, you know, we can sit down with those family members, and a lot of times, they'll say, "Will you talk to my loved one since you've been there?" And Jessie and I both, you know, have long-term, abstinence-based recovery. We've been there. So, you know, we can really sit with those folks and show them, you know, it's possible. Recovery is absolutely possible, and here's how we did it, and listen to what, you know, what they think they may need for their recovery. We take referrals. We work with social services very closely. So when a case is open and it involves the children and the parents need, you know, either substance abuse support or mental health support, we will take those referrals from that agency, and we will work with those folks in, you know, in partnership with the social worker who has the case. And other agencies as well will reach out to us. For example, Crossroads OBX, sometimes when they have individuals and their caseload is kind of large, they'll reach out to us, and we can also assist them with that. And we do resiliency education. So one of the models that we're treating in is the Community Resiliency Model, and we can bring, you know, we can bring those tools to the community. And obviously, something that you're probably all aware of, and I know we've got some bags here that you'll have to look at, is we hand out harm reduction resources and education. So Narcan, we're, you know, we support and promote the Lock Your Meds Campaign, lock boxes so that people can, you know, safely put their medication locked up and away. We have medication disposal bags so that you can safely, you know, destroy medication that you're no longer using, or you don't want around your house anymore. They're eco-friendly, very easy to use, so we make sure we hand those out. As Jessie mentioned, we hand out the fentanyl test kits, which you'll have an example of. And with xylazine up and coming and, you know, and a threat to our community, we've now been able to add those xylazine test strips to those fentanyl test kits. So we just try and get these resources all free. When people reach out to us, you know, we bring them. Jessie delivers. Jessie's really our boots on the ground, and he, within Dare County, he will go anywhere at any time to bring people these resources. You'll hear a little bit more about his work in the Post-Overdose Response Team, but we want to make sure that anybody in Dare County who needs these items can get them from us. Let's see. Got the wrong slide up here. Okay. And a little bit more on how we can support our community members specifically, so we can help them find treatment providers and resources. A big part of our job is linking people to care. So we make sure that we're aware of all of the recovery and treatment options that are out there. We make it a point to meet with these folks from these treatment facilities as often as we can, and we really try to link people and find out what their needs are, what they can afford, do they have insurance, do they not? And, you know, if they can't find the means, we try and reach out to our community partners and help them get the treatment that they need. We can walk them through their recovery process one-on-one. Jessie and I both are certified in wellness recovery action planning, and what that means is we can sit down with an individual and help them craft their very own recovery plan, something that works for them and things that are important to them in their life. So we assist them with that. We advocate for their rights and recovery. A lot of times, folks don't realize that when you struggle with substance use disorder, this is a disability, and they do have certain rights under the Americans with Disabilities Act, so we just help them advocate for those rights. We can provide them with information on support groups. A lot of times, we'll say, "Hey, you know, if you're afraid to go to a group, you've never been to a meeting, we'll go with you." So we'll sit there with them every step of the way if they need us to. As time allows, we can attend court with them. You know, a lot of times, people, again, they're afraid, they're nervous. If it's their first time, they may not allow animals into court, but Jessie and I can be their emotional support. Animals will sit there next to them as they go through this process and make them feel they never have to be alone. And again, as I talked about earlier, we can provide them with the free harm reduction
Okay, and a few numbers. So in 2022, we gave out 1,309 Narcan kits and 1,259 fentanyl test strip kits. Today, we have already given out 1,545 Narcan kits and 1,304 fentanyl test kits. And that, those numbers have changed a lot just because we get out in the community now, and we create relationships with people, and we get to talking and we get to listening. And, you know, throughout the year and a half that we've been, you know, about doing this stuff, or I have more about a year, I was met with people really standoffish in the beginning, and now people are seeing a need for this. You know, there's kids that have lost their lives, there's parents that have lost their lives, and ultimately, it's a ripple effect, like I said earlier about suicide, but it's the same when it comes to the loss of a life due to substance use disorder. So the more people are becoming aware of this and seeing that our county and community provides free services for this, they're really acting on it, and it's good. We're getting good responses. So so far, in 2023, we have responded to 34 community members from the daily EMS overdose report we receive as EMS affiliates. So Katie and I are both HIPAA-trained and affiliates of EMS, and due to us being that, we get reports daily from EMS from local overdoses. So we're provided with some information about those overdoses, the where, when, sometimes the who's, and some phone numbers, and we do our best to make contact with those people or people within the area, and we find out how we can meet their needs, whether with its peer support, or if it's with fentanyl test kits, or Narcan. Our goal with that is, I mean, right off the bat, we'd like to get somebody in the treatment right away, but if they're not willing, we provide them with the harm reduction kits to keep them alive long enough to where they can make that choice to seek that help. We have visited 22 hotels, motels in Dare County to deliver harm reduction materials. So we think about the people that are coming here to vacation, and, you know, the weekend warriors or on-vacation warriors, and so we provide Narcan and fentanyl test strips to them as well, and we also think about the people that are working within the hotels that may come in contact with fentanyl. Also, we have had close to 300 points of contact with community members and agencies to provide one-on-one support, deliver resources, or link to inpatient and outpatient substance use disorder treatment.
And I just want to point out that the increase, I mean, we're well above where we were last year already, and it's September, and that doesn't necessarily mean that our community has needed more, but when Jessie, you know, joined the Health Department last year and, you know, was kind of the missing piece to this program, he made it a point to really get out into the community. He's, like I said, very boots on the ground. He saw a need, and he got out there to hotels and restaurants, and he really just started canvassing the community where it was needed with Narcan. And we, you know, like he said, we do get the overdose reports. Several months ago, we had one individual, a young lady, who had shown up on our overdose report. We get the address, and Jessie finds out, you know, where do we need to go? He drives. We get the address and Jesse finds out, you know, where do we need to go? He drops off the resources, he drops off the Narcan, any information. And unfortunately, a few weeks later, this young lady showed up on the overdose report again. However, when Jesse reached out, this next time he spoke with the young lady's grandfather. And because Jesse had, you know, dropped off Narcan a few weeks earlier, that grandfather was able to save her life with that Narcan, you know, that Jesse dropped off and, and, you know, explained how to use. So he, you know, he's really making a difference, this program's really making a difference. And when those numbers go up, it, it just shows that he's getting out there more and we're getting these resources out to people more who need them.
We also got that young lady in the treatment after that incident.
Yep. There are some things that we know are important needs in the community that this program can't provide. And just a few examples are, you know, gas cards, grocery or rent money, lodging, funding for treatments, you know, those aren't within the scope of our program and nor does the grant allow for some of those expenses. However, we have been fortunate to have so many incredible agencies in this community, in this county, who we've partnered with, we've made relationships with and we've been able to reach out to. So when those needs do come up with an individual, we can, you know, reach out to these community partners and Crossroads OBX, they, are a lot of times able to provide transportation and money for groceries or rent. You know, we work with Interfaith, the Oxford Houses, Brenda Thacker with the Walk Against Addiction, some of the things we've been able to do to help people pay for treatment with, with Brenda's help have, have been incredible. Giving a lot of these community members second chances when they had no way to pay for treatment. But luckily now we also have these opioid settlement funds that allow us to pay for social determinants of health. And on a case-by-case basis, we're now able to provide, you know, sometimes transportation, pay for a cab, you know, money to purchase a phone. We had a woman recently returned to Dare County after getting out of prison and really, really making a concerted effort to turn her life around. And she's been doing the work and she's, you know, this time she's really walking the walk and talking the talk. And she just needed a cell phone. She had no money, she got a place to live at the Oxford House, but she wanted to get a job and open a bank account and she couldn't do that without a cell phone. And so, you know, with those social determinants of health and with that, that settlement money, we were, we were able to, you know, get, get her a phone and she has a job today and is thriving. So that money's really doing incredible things for some of our residents here. And we also, I don't have mobile crisis up here, but as you all know, we have not had a Dare County mobile crisis, crisis worker for quite some time now. And we are fortunate to, Integrated Family Services has hired someone and he begins his work today after several weeks of training as the mobile crisis worker here in Dare County. So he's also very charming and handsome and is also my husband, so. I can safely say that. All right. And a few other parameters. Within the scope of peer support specialists, there's a lot we can do. Using our own lived experience, we're always able to, you know, explain to people or work with them and tell them where we've been and how we got to where we are. There's a few things that we absolutely do not do and some of those are provide therapy, obviously. We don't provide assessments, but as qualified professionals, we can provide referrals for people to get into treatment. We don't diagnose, we don't give advice on medications. We have had some training on medication assisted treatment for opioid use disorder, for example, Vivitrol, methadone, you know, buprenorphine. So we, you know, we, we can give them the information as we've learned it, or we can speak from our lived experience with, with medications, but obviously we don't ever give advice. And our program operates during business hours, Monday through Friday. And at this time, we don't have on-call services, so we just do, we try and do as much as we can in that timeframe. Yeah.
Okay, so the Ross program out in the community. So we also work with the Community Care Clinic with a syringe service program and also Narcan, fentanyl test strips. And what was the other stuff that we're working on right now?
With the Community Care Clinic, the Vivitrol.
The Vivitrol program is, is something that's off and running as well. Also, music, the music events that we have gotten involved in here recently with the overdose prevention side of things, we attended a handful of summer concerts this, this year. And our services came in handy there. We work hand-in-hand with EMS, law enforcement, the security team there. To just make sure things are going well in our community and, and the people that come here to enjoy the Roanoke Island Festival Park are, are going to be safe when they're, when they're there. So also TJ's, so one of the things that we do in, in building relationships here and getting our services out is, is, is making relationships with local businesses, gas stations. TJ's has been one of them out in Collington and they were kind enough to let us set up like a booth there where we get our harm reduction kits out, medication lock boxes, fentanyl test strips, Narcan, medication disposal bags and other kinds of information. And, I mean, everything, it's been great. It's been a great response in the community. And we had a, a young lady that was going to come and share a little bit about those responses that works there. She was unable to make it today. But the community is very grateful for that. We also have a handful of other gas stations within Kill Devil Hills, Nag's Head. We get down to Hatteras Island, even been out to Stumpy Point and Whites as well. And Whites being Man's Harbor. So also Ross in the community, we did a, do you want to?
Yeah, so we, a few months ago WKTR, KTR TV did a, a story about the fentanyl crisis and they did speak with our incredible supervisor, Roxanna Ballinger, and she told her story. And because of, you know, what Roxanna was talking to them about with our program and what we're doing, they wanted to come back out and sort of highlight what we've been doing. So they came out again and were able to interview Jesse. And both those stories ran on, you know, ran on the local news there. And we were just really proud and honored that, that our program, you know, received that attention. So that was kind of fun for Jesse to do those interviews. And they followed him out in the community while you were delivering stuff, right?
Yes.
Ross ride-alongs.
So the Ross ride-alongs, due to us being affiliated with EMS, we wanted to see how we could better do our job in the community. So EMS was kind enough to let us both ride along. We did each a 12-hour shift and we're able to see how they came alongside people in our community and in ways that we could, we could do better. Also, the drug drop-off events. Those are, they're, they're well-known around here. So people drop and dispose of prescription medications. We haven't seen anything else as far as, uh, street drugs being dropped off there yet. But hopefully that will happen in the future. Yep. So we, we are there and we provide our services as well. National Night Out is another one that we provide our services to. We will also be at the Pride Event and other local events. Just, just getting, getting out there and, and making ourselves known and talking to people.
Yep. And this was a, Commissioner Bateman was kind enough to help us start a pilot. We've got our Fentanyl Kills Campaign napkins out at Sugar Creek Restaurant. He was sort of the first to say, yep, I'll try this out for you guys and see how it goes. So we're looking forward to getting feedback on how those, their cocktail napkins put out on the, on the bar. See if we can get people to, you know, start paying attention or starting conversations, whatever. So. And then we were, you know, when we're invited to, to speak somewhere, we're always more than happy to do that. We spoke at the Rotary Club. One of their meetings earlier, earlier this winter and presented our program there. So like I said, the more we can get out of the community and let people know who we are and what our services are, the better for the community. And this is just some additional training and certifications Jesse and I have done. We work really hard to, to broaden the scope of what we can bring to our community. So we're always looking for opportunities to continue our education and get additional training. So the Wellness Recovery Action Planning I mentioned earlier. I'm a mental health first aid instructor, the community resiliency model training. As Jesse mentioned, we're HIPAA trained and are Dare County EMS affiliates. We were fortunate enough to travel to Stanley County for the 2023 Harm Reduction Academy, which is put on, you know, by the same branch who we received the Community Linkage to Care Grant through. And we, we learned an incredible amount of, of information there that we were able to bring back. We've received advanced Narcan training and certification through our county EMS. And also we received safer injecting practices and advanced wound care training that was a certification through the New York Department of Health. And again, with the xylazine, xylazine crisis sort of probably heading this way, we wanted to make sure we understood those wounds and what that's all about. So we were, we were lucky enough to get that training.
Okay. In the future of the Ross program, our Harm Reduction Mobile Unit, we are currently in implication stages of providing mobile services. We are transforming a current vehicle, county vehicle as a mobile harm reduction unit to deliver resources, supplies and peer support to underserved areas of Dare County, including Stumpy Point and Hatteras. This transportation is, is a problem in our area at times. So people from down south being able to make it up to the Community Care Clinic, we're going to be able to take that to them as, as well as Stumpy Point. So statewide, Port NC Post-Overdose Response Team Coalition calls. Katie and myself have been asked by the NC Injury and Violence Prevention Branch to take over the management and facilitation of a monthly statewide call to assist other county health departments in building and troubleshooting in their own ports. This begins September 14th.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, so we were, we've been, Jesse and I have been sitting in on this call for a while now. And, you know, it does seem that with our post overdose response team, we are, we are quite a bit ahead of a lot of the other counties in North Carolina with what we're doing. And so the, the branch reached out to us, the person that, that heads up that call on their team left recently. And because we've had a lot of counties reach out to us to ask for help, they asked us if we would just take over the facilitation of that call because it's, it's, you know, counties who, who are dialing in to find out what they can do and how they can put a program together. So we're very proud that they asked, you know, they asked us to, to help with that. Again, it's just, we love helping other people out and getting the word out on, on how to put one of these together. So we're excited to take on that initiative.
And, and what that says to me too is Dare County has done such a good job at staying ahead of the curve on this with the Saving Lives Task Force meeting. And, and everybody that's been involved in it, there's other counties that, that want to know how we're doing it. And there's been a lot of time and energy and years put into where we're at today. It started something very small and it's grown into something that's, that's really supporting our community and making some positive growth within families. So we appreciate you guys.
Thank you for listening. Here's our information. And like we, like we said, we're just trying to get the word out there. So again, we appreciate you having us today.
Absolutely. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, sir.
I'm aware of y'all's work, Southern End of the County. Would encourage you or to reach out to some of the ministers there. All seven unincorporated villages down there have three preachers come to mind specifically that are very, they've suffered, you know, within their own family. And I'm easy to get ahold of. If you want some help, give me a shout. Otherwise, I'm going to hand these out to the three and maybe they'll reach out to you because, you know, preachers will hold things in confidence. And when somebody needs somebody to talk to, sometimes it's easier to go to somebody who knows how to listen from a spiritual standpoint. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Bob, just to add something that, just to allude to what they were just talking about, the Walk Against Addiction, just let everybody know. And Brenda Thatcher's going to, probably going to kiss me for saying this because she trouts it. 14th Annual Walk Against Addiction is going to be held Saturday, September 23rd at First Flight High School. Nine o'clock, they got a 5K race that morning. We have vendor booths there. We're serving a little bit of food there. We've got guest speakers. I think Jesse, aren't you speaking? Fantastic. It's going to be a great day and you get to mingle and, and we want everybody in the recovery community also to show up there because we want folks to know that there is life after recovery.
And I'll add to that, Jesse and Katie have done an absolutely outstanding job for Dare County. And my personal thanks, guys. Appreciate you every day.
Definitely.
All right, County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item nine on the agenda. This is a resolution regarding Noah Amendment 15. Commissioner House and do Hemmerite again appear for that presentation.
Thank you, County Manager. As Mr. Hemmerite pointed out earlier, we had a public comment period that we had the Noah Fisheries here in this room. And it is a, an amendment 15 to the 2006 Consolidated Atlantic Hali migratory species of fish management. Draft number 15, like I said, it's a thick book. It took them five years to write this. And they're giving us three months to review it. Several different things in there. One of the things is that was brought up was the camera system. I'll get into that in just a moment. A couple of other things too, where they have areas of, in our Atlantic Ocean and federal waters that are non-fish areas are blocked off. And they wanted to look at possibly opening some of that up. But to do that, our guys, our fishermen would have to pay to do all of their fishing for them to collect the data they need. During that part of the presentation, I was, I was put, put aback on that. When they did their public comment here in this room, they did allow me to have the final word. And I told them, and I think everybody in this room can probably will be in, in shock that I said this. But I actually gave the Division of Marine Fisheries, North Carolina Division, a compliment. Whenever the North Carolina Marine Fisheries does test fishing for data, the state pays for it, not our fishermen. So here the federal government wants us to do fishing in their areas to get test data for them, yet our guys have to pay for it, for the trip to do it.
No.
Have they always had to pay for it, Steve?
No.
No. No.
And this amendment was put out on, in May of this year, on August 9th. Noah put out another thing for the National Seafood Strategy. And part of that purpose was to make the direction over the next five years for supporting a thriving domestic US seafood economy and enhancing the resilience of the seafood sector in the face of climate change and other stressors. Here are some of the stressors from their own amendment. The camera systems that are onboard the, the vessels. In 2015 is when they put them on the, made it mandatory, the vessels had to have them. And in 2019, they put out another procedure where they were to cover the cost for the electronic monitoring. Now with draft amendment 15, those camera systems will be phased out into, given to, Noah won't be paying for them. Our fishermen will be paying for them for their, for their boats. And that's going to be phased out over a four-year period. So the first year, our waterman would have to pay 25% of the cost, second year 50, third year 75, and of course, the fourth year, it's all on them. The cost to maintain the cameras. Well, for one thing, it costs about $10,000 just to replace one of them. And if one of them goes down, you have to call a technician to come out and take a look at it. It's $75 an hour for that technician, plus you have to pay for his travel time to get here and his hotel room for him to be here to do that. One particular fisherman I talked to, not in this area, he's further south. He's had, in the last two years, he's had to call a technician nine times to fix his cameras. Imagine what he figured up just the cost of that alone, put him out of business. Now each time you go out under the new management system, it's going to be, they, Noah says it's going to be approximately $280 a set. Now that's up to, and they're putting that figure out not as a solid base of what it's going to be. And Dewey, correct me if I'm wrong, they will have several vendors available that each vessel can assign to that vendor. That they can work out an agreement with that vendor to, to service their contracts. And Noah is saying it should average out to be about $280 a set. But there's no fundamental cost of how much it costs. Noah did not do that research on that. So it's up to whatever the vendor works out with the, with the, with the boat captain. Also, along with that, they're only going to review 10% of that footage. Yet while all 100% of that footage has to be, that has to be stored by data. And that vendor has to, has to look at 10% of each, each set to meet the requirement. And then, and why I'm saying they have to have the data for the whole trip is because Noah can come and says, ah, we might need to look at that trip a little bit more. So even though it's only being visually looked at it for 10%, but they have to store the entire trip. And I know everybody on this board knows and understands that with our new computer systems and updating software, those costs always go up. Our storage costs never sit, never stay the same. This is an undue burden to put on our watermen. And I even asked the question, and several of the fishermen that were there. The camera system has done what it was supposed to do, or what it was designed to do, was observe our fishermen to make sure that bycatch was being reduced. Makes perfect sense. I understand that. But as these cameras are rolling, you also have an observer on the boat. Observing the fishermen fishing and taking the data for the bycatch. So in that essence, why do I have cameras when I've got one of your own observers on the boat at the same time? It's a redundancy. So in Amendment 15, under Section F, one was to, F1 was to run, run the system as it is normally, as it is now. But Noah has said, funding is done. We don't have any more funding for it. Once we phase it out, it's on the fishermen. We're not going to pay for it. F2, alternate two, is the way I've just proposed to you, that this camera system will now be phased into control of, financial control of the vessel. F3, do away with the cameras altogether. That's what I would like to see done. If they're going to have the cameras, have them pay for them. If they don't want the cameras, if they're not going to pay for the cameras, then take them off. You already have an observer on the boat. You have logs that these, the captains do on, on, on every single trip. You have GPS on the boats on their log systems. You know exactly where they're fishing at. At, to me, it's kind of a redundancy. Also with our fishermen, fuel, groceries, bait, you're at $7,000 before you leave the dock. And now I've got to add this other financial burden on top of me. It will equate to, and that's Noah's numbers, using that 280 lineout trip and all that, about 19% of the revenue from that trip. It's 20% rounded up. I'm already paying seven grand. And that doesn't count the cost of my, my boat payment. That doesn't count the insurance. Doesn't count what I'm paying my, my mates, even though they get a percentage of the take, but still you got to give them something. So to me, that's an undue burden and undue stressor. Dewey, have I said anything out of line that was in, in their presentation?
No, you've articulated very well and you could spend three more hours of batting on to it.
Oh, yeah. Most definitely. Thank you. So with that.
Steve, can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
To your comments. In this region, I looked it up online, Noah's budget is in the billions of dollars.
Six point nine.
That's right. B, billions. Of that six point nine, one point, I believe 1.2 is dedicated to fisheries. We're only talking 1.6 million for these cameras out of, out of 1, 1.2 billion that they got for fisheries in here. They haven't, they implemented in 2015, but, and they didn't have to pay for it. But correct me if I'm wrong, Dewey, this is a third camera they're talking about adding to the boat, when they already have two cameras on the boat. And then they got a observer. Basically what, what they're saying is they don't trust our fishermen. It's that simple. They're sending that message. We got 18 vessels. We have four fish houses. I guarantee you, everybody sitting at this table in urban, you of all people know, 20 years ago, what did we have, 15, 16 fish houses in, in wine cheese? God knows Dewey, how many boats did we have back then? What they're trying to do is put our fishermen out of business. It's that simple.
It started out in 2000, there was over 400 Plagic longline vessels remaining.
There you go.
And today we have 80.
80.
And 25% of them are home-ported in Dare County.
Right. Absolutely. So it's, 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 it's real simple, folks. They're trying to put them out of business. It's that simple. If you'd have sat in this room and looked at the faces of the fishermen in this room on August 22nd, it'd bring tears to your eyes. It's unbelievable what they're trying to do to this industry. And Steve talked about 280 a set. Well, they averaged six sets. That's almost 1,700 bucks a trip. And, and Steve talked about all the cost to them and now they're going to take 19% of their revenues again. I, I, I just, it blows my mind where these people have the audacity to treat this industry the way it's being treated. And we need to do every single thing humanly possible we can to fight this.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
They're, they're a little bit talking out of both sides of their mouths as well. Just with regard to observers, I'm glad, I'm glad Steve brought this up. I have a good friend who's a Plagic longliner. And while they want to fuss and moan about cost, he has had observers come up here to fish, to be on his boat when he's fishing row. Travel from Florida, which means Noah is paying mileage per diem and salary for that individual to travel up here, to be on a boat. He cannot leave the dock unless the observer is on the boat. He cannot leave the dock unless the cameras are running. He has to provide a place on the boat for the observer. He gets no compensation for that. And it is just ridiculous for them to now want to transfer the burden of the cost of, of this system onto the fishermen. It is absolutely ridiculous.
And to add insult to injury, the Inflation Reduction Act provided $50 million for observers in the federal fleet on the Pacific Coast. Zero for the Atlantic.
Would we have any advantage? And I know if we've got 20% of the fleet bringing in the Texas's, I, I appreciate our guys so much, our federal reps, but you know, this is going to take some big boys. And I think if there's a coalition that we can form, we can reach out. I mean, I'll just call it for what it is. Noah, they are empire builders and somebody needs to just, somebody needs to call them out. You know, who, who's going to be that person? We can sit here and bang our flip flops on the table and everything, but they need somebody with some big pants on who can bring.
Danny, we were in the room, we called them out. Their answer was, the policy decision makers changed the policy. We said, it's egregious. It's outrageous. It's unfair and it's wrong. Please listen to my first response. The policymakers changed the policy. Next. They do not care, Danny. What branch of government is Noah? What legislative, judicial or executive?
Uh, executive.
Yes, it is. So where do you think one change has to take place before this kind of outrageous regulation and overregulation is going to change? I'm done.
So County Manager.
Sorry. I'm sorry, guys. I can't beat around the bush.
The young man that was running the meeting when they were here stated explicitly in that meeting that this was handed down to them
Yep.
From there.
From above.
From above. That's right. From their, from their managers. It was handed down to them to implement this system.
The decision makers changed the policy. That's the quote. Absurd, irrational, egregious and punitive. And they did not care. I, I asked that individual if he'd carry it back to his superiors. And the answer I got was just unreal. Wasn't it Dewey? I, I couldn't believe that he didn't, he wouldn't agree to take the message back to his superiors.
I never heard him get a clear answer to anything anybody asked him. Every time a fisherman got up and talked.
Why did the words "word salad" come to mind on their explanation? You were here. You heard the word salad.
It wasn't. So.
Resolution.
With, with the help of, of Dewey and also our fine staff at Public Information, we've kind of put together a resolution. County Manager, would you mind reading that for me?
This is a resolution opposing the Consolidated Atlantic Highway Highly Migratory Species Fishery Management Plan, Amendment 15, Section F, Subsection F2. Whereas Dare County has a long heritage in commercial fishing and commercial fishing is the second largest economic driver in Dare County. And whereas due to overregulation of the commercial fishing industry, the economic viability and ever decreasing number of area watermen threatens this valuable economic engine in Dare County and other coastal counties along the eastern seaboard of the United States. And whereas Dare County is the home to, home port to 18 Plagic longline vessels and four seafood processing plants, directly providing employment for hundreds of our citizens and providing fresh wild-caught product to seafood markets, restaurants and consumers across the country. And whereas in 2006, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration adopted the Consolidated Atlantic Highly Migratory Species Fishery Management Plan. And whereas in 2015, Noah adopted Amendment 17, adding the electronic monitoring camera system on all Palegic longline vessels. And this system was installed and maintained by funding from Noah. And whereas on May 7th, not 2019, Procedure 4-115-02, Cost Allocation and Electronic Monitoring Programs for Federally Managed Fisheries was implemented and electronic monitoring continued to be funded by Noah. And whereas in May of 2023, Noah released the draft amendment of the Consolidated Plagic Atlantic Highly Migratory Species Fishery Management Plan. And whereas in draft amendment 15, Alternative Section F, Electronic Monitoring Program, Subsection F2, would transfer all costs of the electronic monitoring program from Noah to the fishing industry. And vessel owners would be financially responsible for all aspects of electronic monitoring, including the equipment servicing, sample and data storage of footage in which only 10% of a set would be viewed, creating an untenable and devastating financial burden on fishermen. And whereas the draft amendment 15 establishes a cost for any and all sets at $280 each, resulting in an estimated $1,700 additional cost per trip on average. And whereas it appears that in Amendment 15, Noah mandates that all of the costs associated with the data collection would be borne by fishermen collecting the data rather than Noah, that the agency that desires, needs and requires the information in order to manage the fishery. And whereas since 2015, the number of North Atlantic Palegic longliners has fallen from approximately 135 to less than 80 vessels, the resultant overall cost to Noah for the electronic monitoring program is significantly lower than before. And therefore would appear that the purpose and effect of Amendment 15 is purely punitive rather than an economic necessity. And whereas on August 9th, 2023, Noah released the National Seafood Strategy Report, which outlines Noah's direction over the next five years for supporting a thriving domestic US seafood economy and enhancing the resilience of seafood sector in the face of climate change and other stressors. Therefore being resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners strongly oppose draft amendment 15, Section F, Subsection F2, as this would add an overwhelming and unsustainable financial burden on our already overregulated commercial watermen and seafood industry in Dare County, specifically on the Palegic longline fishing industry of the east coast of the United States in general. This is the sixth day of September 2023.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt. It's been seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? I would like to say that once we pass this, we'll send this to our federal legislators. And I'm willing to, any of my fellow board members that like to go with me, I'd, I'd like to set up meetings as soon as we can with our federal legislators to put this in front of them and see if we can get some help from them with respect to this, what Noah's trying to accomplish. I would offer one more thing that we, through proper channels, reach out to our governor, Governor Roy Cooper, representing the state of North Carolina, especially the commercial fishing industry in North Carolina, to assert his role and his influence in stopping this kind of egregious overreach by Noah.
Absolutely. I'd also add to that, that there's a cabinet member or two in the administration that we need to have a conversation with.
All right. Any other comments? With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Dewey, I hope we can make some progress here.
I certainly appreciate yourself and I'll continue to keep you abreast of our ongoing endeavors to provide seafood to this country and to Dare County and keep our jobs. Thank you all.
You know, another thing I'd like to say, what was it their plan, Dewey? They, one of the goals and objectives of Noah is to put more fish on the table.
Well, it's oxymoron when you look at what they're doing to us and what their press release is, it's just ass coming in backwards.
Yeah. But they want to put more fish on our table.
More import problem.
Yeah. Thank you. That's right. That's right. Thank you. County Manager.
Yes, Sir. That brings us to item 10 on the agenda. This is a, a bylaw of the Roanoke Island Community Center. Last month, I think we had some appointments and in looking at the bylaws for those appointments, Cheryl found some script errors and typos in it that she's corrected. And so you're simply adopting these bylaws to correct those script errors.
And so you're simply adopting these bylaws to correct those script errors. There's no substantive changes in the bylaws.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve the bylaws of Roanoke Community Center. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ross and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, items 11 and 12 are planning matters and Noah Gilchrist will present both of those.
Good morning, Noah.
Morning Chairman. The first one's a Avon zoning map amendment. Joe Thompson of Lands' End Development is requesting that a parcel of his and Avon be reclassified from C2 commercial to C3 commercial. And the request today is to schedule a public hearing on October 2nd to hear his request and the information provided, so.
I move the public hearing be held on October 2nd at 9:00 a.m. on this.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
The second would be a zoning text amendment to add breweries to the list of uses allowed in the C2 zoning district throughout unincorporated Dare County. So the same request to schedule a public hearing on that day, October 2nd, to hear the information on that text amendment.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
Chairman, both of those public hearings are routine matters and we bring those before you. In discussions with NOAA, I thought we would ask, would you like for us just to schedule those public hearings that are required without having to have a board meeting? And it'll save the applicant a month because we could just go ahead and do it when we hadn't one come before us, since you all are having to set them anyway, so we don't have to wait two weeks to come to the board meeting and then.
Certainly not opposed.
My God. What kind of clear sense would that be? Wait a minute.
That makes too much sense again. Let NOAA in charge of this.
Of course, Bobby. Of course.
Somebody make the motion to give us that authority.
Second.
Been, been motions made by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. That gives us to item 13 on the agenda. This is the annual tax settlement and charges to the tax collector and Becky Huff is here to present that to you.
Becky, good morning.
Get out there and collect those taxes, Becky.
It's that time of year again. Excuse the voice, I've had laryngitis for the last week. My family was very happy, but my voice is coming back today. I wanted to go over our 2022 tax year, which has been, we had a 99.67% collection rate, which is the highest collection rate in Dare County has ever had. I went back to, it's the highest rate since I've been here and it'll be nine years in December. And I went back prior to the last maybe five, six years even before that, and it is the highest collection rate we've had. I have an absolutely phenomenal staff. We don't stop collecting as of June 30th, of course. That's the rate as of June 30th. By state statute, that's the rate that is used by finance to do the budgeting. We do keep collecting. As of yesterday, we were at 99.74%. So in those, what was it? So June 30th through September 5th, we collected another $46,000. So we continue to collect year round on, on everything. We have $175,000, $182 left approximately left to collect after September 5th. Approximately 30,000 of that is uncollectible in the office. There's not, it's either unknowns, bankruptcies, or the ones we've already have in foreclosure that we, we no longer do processing for, the foreclosure attorney does. So we're down to about $145,000 out of over a $1 million levy to collect. So you guys have in front of you the sheet that shows we had a 66 million, almost 67 million dollar levy, 99.67%. We collected for Kill Devil Hills, 99.73, for Kitty Hawk, 99.77, Manio, 99.49, Southern Shores, 99.94, and Duck, 99.96. As you can tell, we also, on the second page for the collection of prior year taxes, we have a total for the tenure from 2013 to 2022, 99.90% collection rate.
Becky, real quick.
Yes, sir.
You look at that, and I'm looking at that exact chart, in 2013, uncollected was $30,000.
As of this date. So we are still collecting on prior years.
Oh, so it could have been 300,000, but over the 10 years we've collected and it's down to 30.
Correct.
Got it. Thanks. I didn't understand the chart.
And some of that uncollected, especially these older years, are part of foreclosure proceedings.
Got it.
That are still open and pending, that haven't been completed yet. The other thing I wanted to go over, I wanted to, I'm going to make this very short because my voice is going to go out, I can already tell. I wanted to introduce you to my staff. They are an absolute phenomenal staff. I just want you to, I just want you to see the people who do all the work for you. Mason Godfrey is the Deputy Tax Collector. Ricky Burris is the Occupancy and Food Beverage Administrator. Katie Williams is, and Emily Lewis, Katie Wilson and Emily Lee Lewis are our collection staff, the collection specialists that do. We all do a little bit of everything. We can have people out of the office for weeks and weeks and weeks and our, for medical issues and stuff like that, and the public, general public doesn't know. Nothing stops. Our office is set to run. I was out for six weeks with knee surgery and everything. I came back, I didn't have piles of things to do. Our occupancy tax administrator was out for several weeks with her knee surgery. Everything runs like it's supposed to. That's what, we set our office up, no one person being gone will stop anything. So I do want to say thank you to my staff. They are absolutely phenomenal and they do a great job. Do you have any questions?
I don't know, other than the fact, where's that 0.04%?
I wish I knew.
I mean, my God, that's, it's totally incredible. I mean, I've sat here since 2012 and every year it just, it just astounds me, the, what y'all are capable of accomplishing when it comes to this. It's incredible.
We, we do a lot of payment plans. I've got a lot of our locals who are seasonal workers on 12-month payment plans because they, they have money in the summer, but our bills don't go out till the end of July, beginning of August. By the time they get it, their income is starting to dwindle. By the time December comes, they don't have money to pay because they're, they're in their off season. And so I've got a lot of them on a yearly, monthly payment plan, so it's not so drastic for them. We've got a lot of our chronic people who were delinquent, no longer chronic, they're delinquent.
I think another shout out to your department is, the phone gets answered pretty quickly.
Yes. That it does get, it rolls. Only time, if you don't, if we're, if the phone rings and you don't get an answer, it goes to voicemail, it's because we're having a meeting. We do staff meetings every month, and that's the only time the phones don't get answered. So I, I believe we are responsible for a lot of the people's, a lot of the taxpayers' money. We need to be responsive to them. So.
Well, y'all do an unbelievable job, Becky.
Thank you.
It's incredible.
Thank you. The next thing I'd like to do is request that you charge me with collecting the 2023 taxes.
Oh, trust me, we will.
I already did that.
Do we need a motion to do so?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think Rob did that.
I move that motion formally now. We charge Ms. Huff to collect those taxes.
Yes, I'll second.
That's right. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess, gentlemen, right now. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners, meeting back to order, and turn it over to the county manager.
Chairman, item 14 is authorize, request authorization for a grant. As you know, we've done, a stormwater study is in process with Withers and Ravenel. You should get results from that here shortly. We paid for that with a grant. We've done some stump, stormwater work over by the airport, Airport Road. We've done that with the grant. They identified in their reports some projects on Old Lighthouse Road and Ocean View Drive and another part of the project on Airport Road that there's now another grant opportunity available for us to try to get some of that work done with grant funds as well. And so what we're asking for is your authority to apply for those grants.
Second.
All right, let me get it here. The motion was made by Commissioner Couch. It was seconded by Commissioner House and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's in our budget ordinance or where we have it, but we're supposed to come to you each time we get an opportunity for a grant. Can we change that? What I would like for it to be is authorize us to apply for grants that come available in any department.
I thought we already did.
Did we already do that?
Yeah, we did that.
Go ahead.
I'm pretty sure we did.
Your grant policy says you only have to come here if there's a local match required. So if there's no match, we don't have to come.
Right.
All right. So that's what we'll do from this point on. Okay. Did y'all approve that? Is that done?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay. No, did you just approve the one I just?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Item 15 is an amendment to the dredge work plan and forgivable work agreement. You have that in front of you. The thrust of that is that in the agreement that we have, we changed the rate that we pay EJE on the dredging in October. And October was chosen because that's when the core normal we change is their rate and all of the rates that we pay EJE are based on that core rate. Our rates a percentage less than the core rate. So when the core rate goes up, that goes up. Well, what's happened is the core's not now always changing their rate in October. And so if they wait until November to change the core rate, then we're not raising the EJE rate until the following October, even though the core rate, which is the, you know, the basis for the rate has gone up. And what this does is it changes so that whenever the core changes their rate, the EJE rate goes with it, which is what we intended when we did the contract. Is that everything, Barton?
Yes, and also the requirement for the maintenance of the ferry division shipyard.
Oh, yes. We had in there that they had to use the ferry division shipyard. They aren't able to work out an agreement with the ferry division to use that shipyard. So we're changing it to a port in North Carolina so they can keep it.
You said they're not able to work it?
Not. It's sort of if it's something available and depending on how long it is, depending on how when it is, they can't get them focused. They aren't able to work out the details of that. They may yet use them, but it'll be randomly, it won't be.
Got you.
And so this authorized them to use some other shipyard in North Carolina to do repairs and maintenance if it comes necessary.
Got you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item 16 is a ClearGov software contract approval, Dave.
Morning, good afternoon, Dave. I was just going to look to see which one. This, I put a full packet of information in, in your agenda book for this, but I, I'm going to keep this fairly short and to the point. Sally provided me with some numbers and given, we're trying to process budgets and the capital improvement plan the same way we did 20 years ago, using just about the same software. 20 years ago, we had 14 funds, now we have 30. 20 years ago, we had around 650 full-time positions, now we've got 767. And budget line items that a budget touched was 1,500 and now it's over 3,000. And we're doing a lot of things where we, we use the Munis software, we use Laserfish forms, where department heads will go in and enter their request in Laserfish forms, then that converts to Adobe, then that converts to Google Share Drives or, you know, Google Share Drive. Then we use Google Web Services to put it on the manager's dashboard so that you can see it. Department heads have to turn around and re-enter it in Munis. They don't always do that correctly, so my staff goes back and checks them and fixes them. And once that's done, we have to come up with the spreadsheet that you usually see that says, this is where we stand now. You know, we do the same kind of thing with, with personnel. We do spreadsheets for health, social services, sheriff and EMS, and HR verifies them, and then we, you know, get a master one from HR and that's where we start. Cola is a good example. We don't spread cola. When you approve a cola in your budget, you've got it in, non-departmental is one number because we can't take the time, there's no way we would have the time to spread all those numbers beforehand into every department and then change them again. Same thing with the CIP. I brought this because capital improvements members know that this is the request book and it used to be about this big. And now it's 33. Last year was, or this year was 33. So that's 33 workbook files with how many tabs in each one? Six or seven? We, we stole it from the city once in Salem, but there's seven tabs in 33 different files of information plus the backup. We did some research and talked to, actually two local municipalities that made the switch and looked at some other budgets. And we actually contacted this company called ClearGov. They're a NACO endorsed partner. And the way it will work is everything comes out of the Munis system, all the data, and we can refresh the actuals whenever we want. And it sits in this bucket that's offsite, hosted by Amazon Web Services, and we do all the work. And it's, it's not simple, but it is as simple as as Bobby sits there and works on it, there's a number at the top of the page that says, here's where we stand. And some of the approvals and disapprovals are as simple as checking a green box or checking a red box or checking a blue box to make changes. The department heads enter at once for both budget and personnel requests and CIP items. They can view their things. We can view everything. You can view everything. Provides audit trails. We can set up workflows. And it's, we're recommending this because it is just, it's time that we do it.
As a practical matter, just a one example of all those things is when we build the budget, we get all of our budget requests in by February the 28th. And it takes Sally a month to take all of that information, input it, get it on a spreadsheet, get it all ready, go, get it to me where I can look at it, go back to Dave. Every change I make, I got to go back to Sally, say, make this change, run the Excel model again, tell me what it does if we make this change, and so on and so on. And it's a very laborious process. With this part of that one thing, those, those things come in, in, I don't know, less than a week, I can have that report that took us a month to build. And when Dave and I make a change, in two or three seconds, we can have the consequences of what we're thinking about changing in that done, rather than having to wait two days for Sally to run the report again.
So this is, this is a one-time fee of 11,000 setup, four modules, and an annual subscription of about $50,000, and it's a four-year deal through '27.
That's right.
Okay. Motion to approve.
And let me, let me point out, they have made, Bobby had some contract changes. They have made every, every one of them. So it's a different version than what's in your agenda book, but they, they were all per the county manager.
We're kind of running on some obsolete stuff. This is high time. Yes, sir. Help everybody out.
Yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the motion. Oh, Rob made the motion, sorry. All right, it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. All right, thank you.
That brings us to item 17. Item 17, we're trying to do some work at Water Plant for a SkyCo Nanof Item seventeen, we're trying to do some work at water plant for a skyco nano infiltration system. We need some engineering work done. The statute says that to get an engineer and architect, you have to do an RFQ and go through that whole process unless the project is gonna cost you, or the fees are gonna be less than fifty thousand dollars. If they're less than fifty thousand dollars, we can come to you and ask you to exempt us from what they're calling the Brooks Act, the Mini Brooks Act. And so this project, the engineer fees will be twenty-eight thousand. The Water Department would like to use Quiavo and Associates for that. We need your authority to exempt us from the Mini Brooks Act so we can move forward that contract.
Does the board need the county manager to read the resolution?
I don't, I would say no.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Oberman and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item eighteen is the amendment to the capital project orders for phase one, two, three of the EMS projects, and Dave has that.
This is a catch-up budget adjustment of things I've been kind of holding to do all at once. We're correcting a, an allocation error I made between phase one and phase two for Barn Hill pre-construction fee. We noticed, and before we could ask, Barn Hill came to us and said, hey, we made a mistake on the Southern Shore Station, and we included the Killable Hills demolition cost in Southern Shores in addition to Southern Shores. So they gave us back sixty-one, three eighty-two. Just a change in line items where I, we would rather have the alerting system in its own line items, so we're doing that for Southern Shores and Mid Flight. I'd already done that for Killable Hills. Same thing, well, not the same thing, we're taking all the network wiring for the buildings, and we want to add it to the Barn Hill contract. That way, RIT's not responsible for the project completion and coordination with all the Barn Hill subs, and Barn Hill can do that. Yes, we are, we are adding the Barn Hill fee and overhead to that, but in our opinion, it's worth it to have them coordinate the work and schedule it. A small correction for a prior budget item I done for undercut at Dare Mid Flight, and then you'd already made budget adjustments for Manny of Frisco and Rodansee when you adopted the CIP. This is to correct the existing capital project ordinance for those same projects. And then finally, your next agenda item is the architectural contract for Kitty Hawk Station, which you included in the CIP. So we're budgeting five hundred thousand of debt proceeds and five hundred thousand for the architectural fees for that. So you're asked to adopt the amendment to the existing capital project ordinance.
Okay, these are basically cleanup items and?
Cleanup, yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
Plus Kitty Hawk.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thanks, stay right there, Dave. Nice segue, because the next item, item nineteen, you just approved a project that works with the Kitty Hawk project. This is the contract with Oakley Collier to spend that money you just budgeted for their services.
Right.
So I need a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner, Commissioner Bateman and House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chairman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then items twenty and twenty-one are for Dave as well.
Okay. I know you're aware of, and the county manager's briefed you on the situation at Dare County Schools for First Flight Elementary and First Flight Middle. They have a nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollar contract for mold remediation and HVAC work. This, the purpose of this item is to adopt a budget amendment for the general fund, which would transfer that amount to capital projects and adopt a capital project ordinance for the cap, school capital project fund for the same amount. Your source would be general fund, unassigned fund balance. The estimate for that at June thirtieth was eleven million. You've used one for teacher housing with the Dare Educational Foundation. You used six in the capital, new capital improvements plan, that leaves four before this item. I will say, I updated that number yesterday. It will, it will be, I don't have June sales tax, I don't have the final quarter of ABC profits, but it will be at least that four. It will probably be more. And the only other thing I wanted to add was, I did find just on Thursday, a story where Alamance Burlington County Schools just did the same contract for eleven schools at four point seven million dollars.
What did they do?
Four point seven million.
Was there, was there like an army of people that swarmed the entire building and?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's a, it's a, I do know it's a per square foot fee.
No, I know that, but I'm wondering how they did it? Was it, again, an army of people?
Tons of people.
They wiped down pencils, everything. They brought in an eighteen-wheeler with sixty people and all the equipment, and then set dehumidifiers throughout the schools.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's a big deal then.
It's the same thing I do, but on a much bigger scale than what I do.
I guess.
Just so you know, to prove their numbers, when we ran those Alamance numbers, they came in.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I choke on the size of the number every time. Dave, I'm looking at page one fifteen. It says appropriated fund balance increase nine thirty-two. I thought we were decreasing the fund balance.
That's, that's the revenue side? So that's to, to use the fund balance as a revenue?
Okay.
So we're gonna take the fund balance, take out nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, and it's an increase.
Well, you show it as a revenue saying, I'm gonna use fund balance by the end of the year of this much. So when you do your balance sheet at the end of the year, it decreases by that much.
That's so clear, Dave. I mean, it's just intuitive, it rolls right off the tongue.
Clear Gov, where are you?
Government financial.
It's a budget, it's a, it's a budget revenue without an actual amount that will go with it.
At the end of the day, our, our fund balance is gonna be diminished by nine thirty-two.
Yeah, right, that's what I get. So when I saw two increases, one to the appropriated balance, one to school capital, I thought.
Whatever his rules are, how we account for it.
That can't be right.
That's where we'll get to once they go through all the contortions.
You're, you're budgeting a revenue that you know the actual will be zero.
Whoever wrote the rules, we need to get them a thing of that Narcan, because they're clearly overdosed. All right, motion to approve.
So motion to approve is a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, item twenty-one is really two things that have combined into one. One, we asked Oakley Collier to go look at the site across the street for potential uses of early college or early college program for the school system. They're proposed, we've included their scope of work, which is an evaluation of everything with both buildings and then a report, including a floor plan. They'll work with the schools for what the program is to determine that floor plan, and then the estimated cost of everything that they need, they think needs to be done to both of those buildings. And the cost for that's forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty. So that's the first part is, is the budget for that cost. But then we had to have a source of funds. We did the new school capital investment fund, so there's no fund balance there to use. But what we can do is, we had not budgeted to use any of the public school capital building fund, which is the lottery money, and we can use that for school debt service. There's five point seven million in school debt service this year, so we'll use, draw down lottery money of fifty thousand dollars and, and, and in a circular way, provide a source for the Oakley Collier contract. So what we're asking is, is just a budget amendment for that school capital investment fund.
Motion to approve.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, then seconded by?
I'll second.
Commissioner Couch.
And Bateman.
And Bateman. Those in, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval minutes from August seventh, the tax collectors' report, health resolution to direct the expenditure of the opioid settlement fund, social services Medicaid expansion budget amendment, public health division state funding for public health infrastructure, local workforce development, a budget amendment and sole source purchase for the approval of emergency management, amendment to the capital project ordinance for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan, it's an error correction, the Board of Commissioners in County Travel stipend, and the ESRI small government enterprise licenses.
Move to accept.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there, seconded by Commissioner Couch? I mean, House, excuse me. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to your board appointments. First, you have the Transportation Advisory Board. The Transportation Advisory Board recommends the appointment of Thomas Mayer and Eileen Bryant to that board.
Move to appoint Thomas Mayer and Eileen Bryant.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. Mike Stone did not wish to be reappointed, and the town of Southern Shores recommends Maggie Carroll to be appointed to fill that vacancy. Mike Sears and Jack Oberman wish to be reappointed for another term.
Move to appoint Maggie Carroll and reappoint Mike Sears and Jack Oberman.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, then seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Health and Human Services Board. Dr. Jane Woodson's and Tim Sharon's terms have expired, and they are not eligible for reappointment. The board recommends McKinney Peel, who's a dentist, and Dwayne Gibbs as an at-large appointment, and they also recommend the appointment of Daniel Jones and the optometrist.
Move to appoint Peel, Gibbs, and Jones.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch and seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then for your upcoming boards and committee appointments, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has three terms expiring in October, and the Transportation Advisory Board has one term expanding in, in October. In November, the Health and Human Services Board has one term expiring. And then in December, you have the Equalization Review Board with five terms expiring, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council with one term expiring, Special Motor Vehicles Valuation Review Committee with three terms expiring, the Tourism Board with seven terms expiring, and the Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to Commissioner and County Manager Attorney Business. Commissioner Couch, you man kicking it off today?
Yes, sir, and thank you. I don't have much, and I appreciate you bringing up the drownings down in Hatteras. I mean, tragic. We're very saddened. There's a lot of water on the move and, you know, between Dare County and the National Park, and the visibility down on Hatteras and, and the municipalities as well, they're, they're very visible. I, I think while it's tragic, it's just, it's, it's an awful thing. I was familiar, young woman that drowned on, a couple of days ago, was actually, she'd been in my place of employment, and it's just sad. And, but thank you for bringing that up. We've had, we're visited down on P Island as, it's one of my favorite places. You go tromping around back in there when, in the fall and the winter, but we've been, had a flock of eleven flamingos come through, and there was been, the unofficial count has been about four hundred people have visited P Island, pulling off the side of the road there. The photography's, photographer's been all over the place. So very cool, they're, they're exotic, they're non-native, wading birds, very elegant, and I just love seeing all this avian traffic in the future of the same there in P Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Ross?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll be equally brief. Once again, I mentioned last meeting, I want to reiterate, there will be a large and significant fundraiser at Duckwoods Country Club between the nineteenth and twenty-second of October. The Love to Remember in support of dementia and memory care in the county. The dinner will be on the twenty-first that evening, and I encourage you, if you're interested in tennis, pickleball, or just supporting an excellent cause, that Love to Remember event at Duckwoods, October nineteenth through twenty-second. There will be another event at Jockeys Ridge, the Mountain to Seas Trail Commemoration and Monument unveiling at nine thirty on September twenty-ninth. I plan to be there. I think it will be a super event, very excited. And additional plug for Jockeys Ridge, I would urge you to support their efforts to get ongoing funding through the adoption of custom license plates. They are Jockeys Ridge-designed license plates. I submitted mine to get one. You can apply and see the information on the Friends of Jockeys Ridge website, friendsofjockeysridge.com. And it's a great cause, it's a great treasure for us, a state park there, and I would urge everyone support. And lastly, nine eleven is coming, and again, I would urge everyone, please, always remember, never forget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross, Commissioner House.
Some more updates on fisheries. Division Marine Fisheries is doing a scoping period on the oysters and hard clam, and that scoping meeting will be, one of their meetings will be September eleventh at six, six p.m. in this room right here. So it's looking at doing some amendments on that and looking for input on those amendments before they start writing them out. The scoping period is when you should be able to voice your opinions and actually get something changed before it actually goes into writing. So scoping periods are very important. Flounder seasons. We've all been confused about flounders, haven't we? Well, in the middle of the southern flounder fiasco here in North Carolina, the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission has decided this year to have a separate recreational season outside of the recreational season set forth by the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries. Not only do these season dates not align, the WRC season runs from September first to the fourteenth, and the Division Marine Fisheries runs from the fifteenth to the twenty-ninth of September. With the Wildlife Resource Commission has a set of four flounder bag limit during the season, while the DMF has a flounder's limit of one. So right now, we're trying to figure out what's going on with flounders when they keep changing the rules midstream. And also, these are recreational dates. The commercial dates for flounder season has not been announced yet. Here's another kicker for the striped bass, moratorium in the Almaral Sound. This just came out just a couple of days after the Marine Fisheries Commission meeting, and this came out as a proclamation and not by a vote from the commission. The spring season in the Almaral Sound went off fine, and they were way under the quota. The Runup River had their season, and their data was flawed. And now, like I said, the Almaral Sound was three thousand pounds under their quota, and for the fall season is now under moratorium. Our fishermen cannot fish for rockfish, striped bass this, this fall, which has raised quite a few of our charter boats, having to refund charters. And we're trying, I'm trying my best to get some background on this of number one, why it wasn't presented during the Marine Fisheries Commission meeting, which was just days prior to this, and why if we're three, three thousand pounds under quota, why are they cutting on? But yet, the Runup Rapids, while they're fishing during the spawning season in the spawning grounds, was allowed to happen. But yet, now we've got this mess. But yeah, now we've got this messed up. Our day in history, I've kind of gone outside the loop on that, because before our next meeting, we have a bigger thing in history, and obviously, that was 9/11. And on 9/11, we had 19 hijackers on four fully loaded US commercial airplanes bound for the west coast, in three different incidences. 2,753 civilians were killed at the World Trade Center. As of September 2021, 1,646 of those victims have been positively identified. 343 New York City firefighters who died in initial attacks and the subsequent collapse of the World Trade Centers, one of those was a good personal friend of mine, Assistant Chief Peter Gonsi. Eight EMT paramedics, 23 New York City police officers, 37 Port Authority officers. The age of the youngest victim, two years old. The age of the oldest victim was 85. 184 people were killed in the hijack American Airlines Flight 77 that crashed into the Pentagon. Another friend, Lieutenant General Timothy Maud, who was on Joint Chiefs of Staff, he was in charge of recruiting for the Army, and maybe you might have heard one of his slogans that he'd came up with for recruitment, "An Army of One" was his campaign. Forty passengers and crew killed on United Flight 93 when it crashed near Shanksville, Pennsylvania. A total of 2,977 people were killed. Michael Fallon Judge was an American Franciscan friar and Catholic priest who served as chaplain for the New York City Fire Department. While serving that capacity and praying with fellow rescuers, he was killed when the North Tower fell. His body recovered and placed on the altar at St. Francis Church just a block away, becoming the first certified fatality of September 11th attacks. As his body laid in state in St. Francis Church, the Cardinal from the United States of America was in New York and read him his last rites. In September 2021, Judge was nominated for sainthood in the Catholic Church, and his FDNY helmet rests in state in Nevada City. Father Judge Walk of Remembrance takes place every year in New York on the Sunday before the 9/11 anniversary. It begins with a mass at St. Francis Church on West 31st Street that proceeds to the side of Ground Zero, retracing Judge's final journey and praying along the way. On 9/11, here in Dare County EMS Station 1, there'll be a march from EMS Station 1 to the Wright Memorial, and this march starts at 8:46 AM, the time of the first impact. We will march to the Wright Brothers Memorial and back to EMS Station 1. Please keep 9/11 and the people who perished and their families in your continued prayers. And for a lighter note, meet our pet of the week, a very nice, rambunctious puppy that was adopted and then had to come back and is looking for adoption again.
Our pet of the week this week is Bailey. This sweet girl was surrendered into our care after being adopted out as a puppy. Her previous family moved and couldn't take her. Bailey is full of personality and is quite the goofy girl. Bailey loves affection and would make a great addition to any family. Come and meet this spunky pup. To adopt Bailey or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manayoe. For more information, visit obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please run down to SPCA, give Bailey a new home forever, please, and Godspeed to everyone, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, like to recognize our service pin recipients, Lee and Jody, for their 35 years of service, and our employee of the month, Brandon. Again, couldn't do it without them. On August 22nd, myself and virtually all of our commissioners attended the school convocation at First Flight High School, and it was a heck of a lot of excitement and energy that went on during that convocation, and really appreciated being there and seeing the energy that the teachers have and the excitement that they showed getting ready to come back to school. On August 31st, there was a prescription drug drop-off event scheduled for the Food Arama parking lot. I think it was going to run from something like 10 to 2, and that had to be canceled due to the storm. That will be rescheduled, and just wanted to encourage people to discard their old prescription drugs so that they can be safely disposed of, and those prescriptions can be for people and for pets, so don't forget any old pet medications that may be laying around as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Commissioner Bateman?
I have nothing to share.
All right, thank you, sir. County Manager, did you have anything else for us today?
Yes, sir, I have three things. One of the things, I have an application from the US Coast Guard for asking us to consent to and sign a certificate of exchange for documentation on the Miss Katie vessel. The shareholders have changed and they have to change their documentation. It doesn't change anything with our contracts and our agreements, but it does change the shareholders, and I need the county's authority to sign that.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Most approved.
Motion by Commissioner House, seconded by
Second.
Vice Chairman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
At our last meeting, we resolved some conflicts with regard to a dredge project we had for Island H, and we got settlement agreements and releases and all that, and I got a word from the contractor last week that they had left something out of that agreement and wanted to know, would we be willing to add another $3,800 to that?
$3,800?
$3,800 to that settled amount for some engineering fees that weren't included in the amount that we settled for.
And this is from who?
This is from the contractor, Robertson, that did the dredge work. He said, will you take it to the board? I said, okay, I'll take it to the board, but we've got a signed settlement agreement or release, we, all the numbers we had, we paid what we thought was fair then. I don't have anything to add to that to change it, so without your approval, I told him I'm not changing anything.
I'm trying to make a decision, I mean, I don't have enough to say.
Basically, he got a bill from his engineer that had an additional $3,800 in fees that he didn't include in the numbers that we were talking about when we were settling, and so we settled for a specific number, more than, you know, what the original cost was. He signed a release agreement, we signed a release agreement.
Then it's done.
Putting the whole affair to bed, and now he's asking for additional funds.
We've got a signed agreement from him saying he was satisfied with the payments, so.
That's right.
Well, in the world of doing the right thing.
Right.
Yeah. The right thing would be
Yeah, I mean, if he
To pay him the $3,800.
Yeah.
That's why I brought it to you.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like I said, to do the next right thing, we need to pay the man $3,800.
I don't have a problem.
I motion we pay him $3,800. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by a vice chair, any further discussion?
Part of me leans toward Commissioner House, but I'll go along here.
Yeah, I'll do the same thing.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous then.
All right, then the last thing, over behind the water park in Rodanthe, there's a large wetlands area, we've looked at it before at various times. I'm getting calls from people wanting to buy lots in there or buy some combination of lots in there with the thought that they can either fill them and make them into buildable lots, or they can combine some lots and have enough high ground to build something on, and asking us, do we want to sell those lots back there? And this is like, the first couple of times we looked at them, they were wetlands, and the person that wanted them backed out. The second time, they were in an area that's near where we have a well, and we have to have a 100-foot radius around that well that's undeveloped, so we wouldn't sell the lots in that area. Now I've got another one that the guy's interested, I think he wants to move a house there in Rodanthe. I don't know whether it's high land, low land, I don't know what the value is, but before I took him down the road, I wanted to know, are we prepared to look at selling any of those lots? If we are, then I would tell him that for us to value it, he's got to go get a wetlands determination and do all that stuff to see if it's a buildable lot so that we can put a value on it. If it's not a buildable lot, then we got a different value on it. So, but I don't know whether we want to sell them at all, whether we want to keep them just to have that area available for whatever in the future.
Absolutely, I would move if we keep them.
Yeah, me too. All right, you want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Well, in that motion, what I'm going to tell anybody that calls me about that lot is the board has decided those lots are not for sale, and I won't keep bringing them back to you.
Right.
I agree. All right, motion's on the floor by Commissioner Couch, I believe Commissioner Bateman seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have.
Thank you, County Manager. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
I have a couple of things. I was going to mention the airport's 80th celebration. They're planning a lot for the Saturday, September 23rd from 10 to 3:00. They're going to have some vintage aircraft, they'll have some presentations about the history, they have a really rich history there, antique cars, youth events, food trucks.
Speakers.
Yeah, a lot of speakers, asylum auctions, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. We've helped them create a webpage, it's darenc.gov/airport80. So that's an exciting event. And I also wanted to mention our new county librarian, Megan Leonard Beasley, she's, I think she's going to be a great librarian for our three branches. She had served as the reference librarian, and she's put forth a lot of really neat programs. So I'm excited for her in that role. And then we had our new channels manager for the GovEd Current TV started yesterday, Chad Fournier, so you all will have a chance to meet him, I'm excited he's on board. And while talking about Current TV, the town of Nags had used some of their funding from the channels to produce a video about Ash Wednesday, and Current TV is co-hosting the premiere for that event on September the 14th at 2:30 at Jeanette's Pier. So I wanted to encourage everybody to, it's about a 30-minute documentary.
And what is it on again, Dorothy?
It's Ash Wednesday and the impacts of the Ash Wednesday storm.
What year was that? Do you recall?
62.
62.
It was bad.
My God, climate change hadn't even started, and here we had a terrible storm.
And some of those folks that are in the video will be there to tell some of those stories. So I think it'll be, it's 2:30 in the afternoon at Jeanette's Pier, it's a free event, so would love, would love for you all to attend.
What's the date?
The 14th of September. At 2:30. Not sure what day.
What day is it?
Let me look at the...
I think it's Sunday.
No, I think it's a Thursday.
It is.
A Thursday.
2:30?
Yes.
We're not hitting it.
We're on, we're meeting Wednesday. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. Speaking of TV, how many of y'all gets Spectrum?
Yep, the channels are missing, contract dispute.
Yep, contract dispute with Disney, they can't get enough, man, they just got to gouge you to death. I did call Spectrum.
Oh, good, I was going to do that today.
And they will give me $15 off of my bill because we've lost those channels, so they've credited my next future payment, about 15 bucks a month. I signed, as much as I didn't want to, I signed up with Disney for $1,299, so now I got my stations back. So a few bucks to the good.
Was that when you called them?
Oh, no, it's, you go through, you go through, excuse my, you know what, you go through hell to try to sign up. It's
No, I was meaning Spectrum.
Oh, no, I called Spectrum specifically.
But there are many, many people who are just like you. Do each one of us have to call them, or are they going
Oh, yeah, trust me, you think for one minute they gonna give you that 15 buck without you calling, ain't no way.
That 30-minute process.
You got to call, you got to call, and it took me 30 minutes, but it was worth the 30 minutes to get the 15 bucks off. So then I went, signed up with Disney, which I did not want to do. As a matter of fact, I'm looking for other cable options as we speak, but I didn't want to lose out because I wanted those channels, and that was $1,299, so I'm saving a couple of bucks. So, but they're still ongoing negotiations with Disney, but it ain't going to happen this year, because if you recall, last year they did the same thing with a major show that was on CBS, and that was Dancing with the Stars, and you couldn't get it.
Right at the start of it.
And so many people raised cane that now they've added it back.
And they did this at the start of football season.
Yeah, and, no, you know when they did it? Fri- Thursday night.
Clemson and Duke.
I was watching game day. Game day ended at 9 o'clock, I mean, at 8 o'clock, and the game was supposed to come on at 8:00, screen went blank, and then it's when Spectrum put the notice up on the screen.
Not our fault, yep.
Yep.
Blame game.
Yeah. So anyhow, that's, that little bit, that little bit of info, at least, you can wash the cost down. So, all right. David, you got anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn until 9:00 AM on October the 2nd.
So moved.
Okay, motion on the floor by Commissioner House, been seconded by
It's 9 o'clock?
Commissioner Bateman?
Mr. Chairman, not 5?
Yeah, 9.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.